Should we go to chapter ten and take care of chapter ten first? Do you want to, or what would you like to do?
Um, I would like to finish five.
Okay.
So that we can get five piped up and everything finished up tomorrow so that it can, you guys can have it for Wednesday.
Okay.
And then discuss briefly additional issues and then go to chapter ten. Because chapter ten. We still have to have another hearing on or public hearing on.
Chapter ten, we have had a public hearing on, but I would like to talk about chapter ten tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's important.
I don't think these others will take that long.
All right, okay, I'm gonna let, this is gonna be a long day, I'm gonna let you start off.
Okay, well, the first one was, I'm now in Bruce's shoes. Bruce has called me today and he had boat and car malfunctions, so he can't be here to discuss the further revisions to the table of allowed uses. So I emailed it to everybody today. I have some extra copies.
I don't have to, they usually have time to print all these up.
Yeah.
The same day.
Yep, here.
Sally, there's just no way I can do it.
I'll take one so I know I'm on.
You gave me a variety, maybe I could look at it one week ago.
Well, Stacy.
Well, this actually, this was even updated as of three o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah.
After I sent the one this morning, there was a further, so Stacy, I should probably give you this one, which is even further updated from the one I emailed you guys, what, this morning on? Um, so, basically, Bruce took the lead on this and he made some further revisions from last time, and the principal revisions I'll kind of go over, and if anyone has further revisions, we can discuss those. The first is in residential and it's basically making sure that the higher order uses are included within the lower level zones, so that you can see there's some additional Ps. Like if you look at dwelling, single-family, attached, there's Ps in the R3, R4, R5 category. That was the principal change there. Kind of moving down, in the adult care, he divided that into adult care 1 through 8 and adult care nine or more with some different standards. The governmental administrative and civic buildings references the code section because that's the new provisions that you guys put in, and it has to be referenced because there's actually slightly different standards in those, in the actual code sections, so there's some additional requirements there. He added industrial instructional services and vocational trade schools under education. On the next page, on telecommunications, he divided before all of the towers were combined, now the four towers are separated out. I think that was based on some comments he'd received, and I know I forwarded his comments from, or Debbie, your comments to Bruce, and that's consistent with the provisionally adopted code and is important because some of the towers are pretty controversial in some of the zones. He added a vet clinic under animal, commercial kennel. The additional change he made late this afternoon was under visitor accommodations, recreational and vacation camp. He made that a conditional use in B3 and PLI. That was not on your earlier table of uses earlier today. waste and salvage section, he added several Cs in that. You can see in the PLI zone that weren't there before, and he received comments and thought that those should be added there. Those are, I think, from his notes, the principal changes. Does anyone have other changes they want to discuss?
The only thing I can see is warehouse and light warehouse. What's the difference between a light warehouse and a warehouse on page three, under warehouse and storage? Does anybody know what the difference is? You know, the warehouse requires a site plan review in B3 and MC, but a light warehouse is permitted, so, I mean, that could be.
Are you looking it up?
Let's see.
The X means it's deleted.
So there was something there, like a P or a C?
Yes, there was something there and it's been deleted.
So it means it's no longer prohibited or permitted?
Correct.
So you can't have in I2, you can have retail but not office, is that?
I can't really find the definition. Can anybody find for warehouse or light warehouse? I'm just thinking, maybe it should just be one thing instead of two.
Warehouse was defined.
Is there any definitions of that?
On page 223. A structured building in an area available for the purpose of storing raw materials, goods, or property. I don't know of a definition of light warehouse. I know, I can remember what the conversation was, but I don't, um, I guess. D7, and what I'm looking at is wholesale establishments. Maybe what we got to put down there is a note for, we need a definition of the minimum.
Or Stacy, do you, do you think they should just be under, just one, under just warehouse?
I'm sure he's thinking of light warehouse, he's probably thinking of those combo office warehouse type places that are 1,000 square feet or 2,000 square feet. Maybe it should be defined by square footage and not by.
To me, a warehouse is something like Carlisle Wood Run or something like that, a significant, maybe Carr Gottstein has a warehouse, whereas your little office combo in a B, normally in a B3 or something like that.
Yeah.
Would, Bob, would you? Like electrical, you know, like Brown's electric.
Yeah.
Well, that could be, that could be general retail.
What do you, what is the classification of Huffman Business Park? Because there's some warehousing in there.
Under the new code, or.
Both.
Under the, under the current code, it's in an I1 zone. And under the new code, it's under the, um.
So it would be still in the I1, but the uses would be permitted through the business industrial part, PUD, so.
You mean, are they warehouses or are they storage, or are they, what do you call them?
Depends on what they're using the building for.
That's why they're having a PID, because they're, I mean, they're retail, they're strictly wholesale, they're used for manufacturing.
All the.
Churches.
But they're not big, ugly, huge, massive structures that you would associate the word warehouse with?
Right. Under, under the PID, I think that there's limitations on the building size, the uses. They're not warehouses in the sense that the J and G warehouse on C Street is a warehouse.
So ask Bruce what, what his intent.
We need a definition.
Yeah, the difference between the two.
Oh, we understand warehouse, we don't understand light warehouse.
Okay. Any other?
I'd call it warehouse combo.
Or under certain square footage.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, that's true, it's not fair because what if it's a building with a whole bunch of units in it?
I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't square footage on it.
On, has Stacy done? Under vocational slash trade school, there are a number of apprenticeship schools in industrial areas.
Yeah, sure, carpenters.
Carpenters to speak of, ironworkers to speak of, other ones. I think they should be, because I believe that's where an apprenticeship school would fall. I believe that they should be a permitted activity in, in either I1 or I2.
Yeah, we just understand them.
That was a good catch.
Yeah.
Debbie's comments, some of these we've heard before. Under airport, and I'm looking at Debbie specifically, Merrill Field is zoned of what? It's not PLI, it's a, it's an I1, thank you. So we need to put airport as a, I guess it'd be conditional in I1.
Or just a site plan revision?
I mean, it's existing.
Right.
I would, I'm, I'm putting, Stacy, there's a C under PLI, and so I'm keeping the same requirement. Now whether or not that's valid or not, I could be corrected easily, but I would like to see a C under I1 because of Merrill Field. Under, he added, he combined commercial kennel and vet clinic. We had a ton of discussions regarding those two, and to me, the ending analysis was a vet clinic is basically retail. By the requirements varied elsewhere in the code, everything has to take place inside in a vet clinic. And so other bodies in discussing this thing thought a vet clinic belonged with the retail and the commercial kennel is where it was, because, I mean, they're permitted in a number of places, that may not be a big one. But I remember there's been a lot of discussions on that one.
Are you suggesting the same?
I would break them up.
But in terms of conditional use and.
It would be the same.
Permitted the same, just moving it to under retail?
Two lines instead of one.
But move it into the retail section?
Yes, move vet clinic into retail. I mean, it is, you know, a lot of places have a vet clinic in a mall and stuff like that, I mean, they're, they're not really different.
Most of them do have kennels.
But the kennels are indoors and they're normally just, not kennels for overnight. They may be, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I won't, I'm just pointing out, I felt that they were different. Going on down, general outdoor, commercial, Trojan track is zoned what?
In ERI.
What?
ERI.
Is it zoned, um, then I guess we're okay because it's conditional, it's conditional here if I can read across on that one. Under skiing facility, Alpine and Nordic are all the high schools and all the trails of the high schools in PLI. What? Chugax or the park? Can they go next thing? And, and I don't know whether this, this I believe would create a problem there, which I don't think it's our intent. And what is, what's the trails, Birchwood Trails, ski trails? R? P, Parkwood, PR? So that works, okay. This may be okay, I don't know. I'm just.
We added the C in.
ERI.
No, in PR, it was in PLI.
All right. I think that's all I have.
Anyone else?
Aircraft, marine, vehicle sales and rentals under retail. If we're gonna have an airport under PLI, then we should have sales of aircraft under PLI too.
Okay, you want that conditional use?
Is it a conditional use on to have an airport under PLI? Um, yeah, I guess.
You're gonna have a conditional use to sell an airplane at an airport?
Yeah, I don't know, that doesn't make sense. I would think it would be. Well, no, it's just under PLI, I don't know.
If the airport's there, then it should be allowed with use.
Right.
It's not like you can take the airplane and move it down the street and put it on a I or V3.
Just fly it down.
Just truck it down the road.
So you should be, think of it should be a permitted use under PLI?
Yes. Airplanes under there, because in fact you can't move them, they're no part of this.
Yeah, and then the government sells them too. We bought airplane parts and stuff like that when they had sales.
Does aircraft manufacturer consider it heavy or light manufacturing?
Guy manufacturing floats off Old Mallie, where does he fall?
Own occupation.
Grandfather.
No one knows about it.
Yeah, he's on his own little domain.
Okay, we're moving off this. Did everyone get Tyler's comments?
Yeah.
Last one, extra, does anyone else need one?
I didn't print them.
The question I have, I've looked at these, but what I think doesn't make any difference. For, for you guys, the question I have is, shall I just go ahead? He wants to talk about these Wednesday. Wednesday, so I, you know, and he's prepared to discuss them. I can go ahead and include them in the amendment chart for chapter seven and include them in the red line, blue line draft, or I can wait, whatever is easiest for you guys to follow in terms of his proposed amendments? Or would you want to wait until you hear it?
I think he has some really good comments, some really valid ones.
Well, we just talk about them for a second here.
Well, I think he should be here to talk.
Yeah, I think he should be here to talk about them and.
Couldn't he be here Wednesday?
He will be here Wednesday.
He will be here on Wednesday. Sally, if you want to put them in, then we can put them in in a different color.
Well, and that brings up another question I have is, just process wise, what, you basically got done, or at least pretty much done with 1, 2, and 12, and as part of that, there were a couple additional amendments that were discussed at the hearing that I've added. So, do you want, how do you want to get that information? Do you want, I'm hoping there's, we don't have to create, print out.
Yeah, one more document.
One, I mean, do you want another whole set of those chapters? They're added to the amendment chart at the bottom, so you can see the new amendments that were discussed, and then the question, and then they're incorporated into the red line, blue line, but my question is, how do you want to see that? Do you want another, I'm hoping you don't need another whole printed version.
We don't need another whole printed, but it, on the amendment chart, you're adding them to the amendment chart, if you could add those in a color, then.
Okay, well, and I put them at the bottom, so we know that they were new.
All right.
And the other thing I could do is I could print, I could, you know what I could do? I could give you new pages, those pages that were affected, so you could actually see as opposed to.
Yes, but then we'd have to figure out how to insert them.
No, I wouldn't say to insert them, just so you could read them to kind of see the content.
If you wanted to attach them to the amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah, attach it to the amendment document.
Okay, okay. And so for Tyler's.
At the back.
Should we just add these to the back of these, to the bottom of the chapter seven amendment chart?
Then once it's, if it is approved by the commission, then you can go ahead and.
Put it in?
Yeah.
That's, I just want you to be able to talk about them and see what is being proposed in the easiest way.
Right, well, we already have a variety of amendments proposed for chapter seven.
Right.
So the numbering here for amendment 1, 2, 3, 4.
Doesn't work.
Doesn't work.
No, I'll just add them to the bottom of the chart.
Add them, add them to the bottom of the chart, and if you could somehow denote that they are Tyler's recommendations, so that we don't get confused with what the commission has already discussed.
Right. Okay. The other thing I wanted to talk about, or have Stacy talk about really quickly, is what you brought up at the end of last, our last meeting, which was deleting the maximum setbacks.
There's that whole commercial section about delete, about maximum setbacks, which time you can probably talk about it a little bit. There is, there's, there's a whole thing that says you have, you can only be so far from property lines with your buildings, it's kind of different. I, I'm not totally for it, and I thought we could maybe discuss it. Anybody have any feelings on it?
Are you talking about retail and office then, if it has the street sidewalk and maybe walkable friendly and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, it's 2106030C5. And Stacy's proposal was to delete that, those provisions, but we really hadn't discussed it.
Stacy, I would rather have a guy like Tim Potter help me decide where my building's supposed to go than a book. I realize a book is good, but it may not be good in every situation as far as.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to get rid of it, yeah.
1061.
I don't know how the professionals.
What are you proposing, Chris, is what's that?
This is just maximum setbacks, keeping up regular setbacks, but deleting maximum setbacks, just not having maximum setbacks.
This section is an explanation of how to apply and measure maximum setbacks where they are required. So if there's a type of development where a maximum setback is required, this is sort of the, this is sort of like the same as the explanation of how to measure what goes on in minimum setbacks. It provides the applicant and the administrator the explanation of exactly how it works, and so, for example, if there's anything that the commission is still posing to require maximum setbacks of, this section would actually be needed for that. If the commission is proposing to remove maximum setbacks from Title 21 rewrite altogether, this would not be needed by the commission's version.
So where is it, what zoning or what types of developments require or have maximum setbacks?
Mixed-use districts in the provisionally adopted Title 21 are heavily dependent on maximum setbacks. The maximum setbacks are specific to those environments where by comprehensive plan, the municipality is attempting to, health areas evolve into mixed-use district areas. So they would apply to mixed-use districts. So for example, if a mixed-use district is established in a certain area, then future development would comply with the maximum setback. So that's how it works. Those are the areas where it would apply to. And the table, table six, the dimensional standards, that's where you would actually find in the provisionally adopted Title 21 where a maximum setback would be implied. For example, you don't see it, for example, in the B3, you don't, you don't see it except for in the mixed-use districts.
Which we deleted.
Yeah, which we deleted the mandatory requirement for mixed use in all districts and made it voluntary within certain zoning districts, and we left the standards which would include the maximum setback requirement. We left all of the mixed-use standards in place because they now become voluntary rather than mandatory in zoning districts that would accommodate mixed use.
So would this section become obsolete or not?
No, if, if, for example, in, in R4 zone, someone, a developer elected to do mixed use, then they would follow the standards that have been established for mixed use. Or they would ask for variances, yeah.
And when we revised the table in chapter six, there's still the mixed, the same mixed, just what Connie just said, the same mixed-use standards that came from the zones that are eliminated are still in that table as mixed use within the existing zones.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we're gonna leave that in then?
Unless anybody feels differently.
No, I wasn't. It's optional.
I wasn't clear on that either, so.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing is it's optional. I have to elect to go to mixed use.
Right.
If I go to mixed use and it has a maximum setback, this defines as what it is.
That's correct, yeah.
In that case.
It has to stay.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
It doesn't have to stay, but rather than mess with mixed-use standards, we left those standards in place for those owners, developers that want, that choose to do a mixed use.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing, I think Jim has some.
I've got three, three minor changes. I did not get them printed in I apartment. Can you please?
Did you email them?
No, I did not.
So that wasn't your email?
No.
You sent emails something, didn't you?
Well, I did that, we got squared away.
Do you have copies?
Well, it's him, him, Chris, yeah, if, Tom, can I get copies, one of those three, please? And we go to something else and come back to it, please?
Sure, does anyone else have any other proposed changes, revisions in looking at any of the stuff that we've gotten? What, do you want to talk about Quonset hut?
I'll talk about Quonset huts. We argued mightily, and I didn't want to copy this either, but I agree with you. I went to my Bible, the construction dictionary published by the National Association of Women in Construction. They, they define Quonset hut, "A semi-synical shelter of insulated corrugated steel designed chiefly for military use." And that is what they define Quonset hut as.
I like the definition.
I like to go to, rather than write it or figure it out myself, I like to go to a Rather than write it or figure it out myself, I like to go to a source. And this seemed to me what we wanted to... We wanted to find it. And, you know, when you see designed chiefly for military use, that does not preclude an architect from using a semi-synical corrugated metal shape as part of his feature.
A couple thoughts. At the last time when you talked about it, the section that prohibits Quonset hut is reserved and not... Under the code, it says reserved, and there's nothing under it right now. So, when you talked last time, you said maybe just have the whole definition of Quonset hut deleted and address that at the same time the prohibited structure provisions are addressed. So, that's one way to proceed. I mean, we could put in a new definition, but where it really applied was under the section on prohibited structures, which is no longer... There's nothing under that section right now.
So, explain to me prohibitive. Is that anywhere in the municipality or anything?
Well, the section right now on prohibited structures is... There is none. It is not written.
Yeah. It would have...
It would have prohibited Quonset hut.
Okay. So, I'm thinking of all the different applications for corrugated metal chiefly built shelter. We won't call it chiefly, we'll call it economic built shelters, okay? Material storage, sand, gravel, winter aggregates, that you can't let to get moisture on and freeze, where the municipality uses it or private contractors use it for sanding roads or parking lots. Aircraft hangars, they're commonly used in L.A. 48 on airports. They have some sort of protection.
I should have been clearer. It was specific to the residential section, I said, would have been...
Well, if someone has a private airpark on hillside or down by railroad tracks in South Anchorage, they have houses on the private strip.
This is an accessory structure.
Yeah.
The Eagle River Consortium has a definition for Quonset huts, which is a pre-fabricated structure usually made of corrugated metal in the shape of a longitudinal half cylinder. That's pretty plain and simple. As far as the definition goes, I think that's a pretty good definition. That doesn't address the issue of where they are or are not allowed, but to be consistent, I think that's an appropriate definition.
And those are permitted building, right? And Eagle River, chapter 10?
Yes.
Yes.
Commercial, industrial, park areas, and residential municipality.
Has to be being large lots, primarily rural.
Yeah.
So, is the consensus to go ahead and include a definition and use the Eagle River Consortium's definition? Or do you want to use the other definition?
I'm not married to it.
Or no definition?
Let's be consistent.
What's the purpose of even including it? Is everybody... I mean, nobody builds them anymore, anyway.
What's that?
Quonset huts? Who's using Quonset huts?
Why don't L.A. 48, they're using them all over the place.
I mean, newer type structures like that?
They're brand new.
The reason to include it...
And they're corrugated metal and they...
So, include it so it can be used and defined?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or if it gets prohibited, to have it be narrower than the current definition, because the current definition was really broad.
A lot of times, instead of being just, you know, bare little, they're powder coating it. You know, give it some color, some contrast. I mean, they just... You know, they never did that fifty, sixty years, but to give it, you know, some... I guess some months for it. So, putting different types of doors on, you know, frontal, frontal view and stuff. But it is... I mean, there's... The advertisement side, see, there's lots of steel manufacturing companies advertising it, and they're actually getting more and more popular again because of their cost basis.
Sheen, I went to Dr.'s office, and there's one over in Diamond. Looks like it's getting more than ten years old.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you don't have to decide, and you can't decide today, so we'll go ahead and put in the definition.
I just think if it's, you know, if it's, you know, in the proper area and structurally, you know, deal, I don't know. I don't think I'd want to eliminate it. Yeah. I mean, they're starting to do some pretty interesting things over now.
All right. Okay. Back to your head up.
Okay. I talked to the people who've been working on landscaping, Terry Schonthal, Dewayne Adams, today, and they had three changes. And if you look on the first page I gave you, under buffer landscaping, the 20 feet really was impacting several projects they looked at, and they felt the 15 would be better. And then the other change on that is if you put a six-foot-high fence up, this is principally between industrial and residential. They thought a six-foot-high fence was actually better than additional landscaping. And so, if you put a six-foot-high fence up, the five-foot landscaping, they felt that that would accomplish what we need without taking up too much real estate. That's the first change. The second change, they had deleted under landmark tree, they deleted NA and put newly installed four, but it was put it out to them, it's really hard to newly install a landmark tree, because landmark tree is sort of kind of defined as already there and existing. And so, we need to cross off the four and go back to NA there. And the last one was the surety. And Tyler had a comment about the surety. And the surety says 120% of the landscaping... Well, try to define 120% of what is landscaping? Is that landscaping including topsoil, irrigation, hardscape, and all that? Or is that just plant value? What is that? And as Terry told me this afternoon, he's never had all the trees and shrubs die on a project. And so, 120% seemed particularly bad. And then also said he has some clients that like to go more than the required, and 120% actually penalizes a client for going more. Let's say you have 100 trees required by code, and so 120% says you have 120. Well, if you wanted to plant more trees and now had 200 trees, then you take 120% times the 200 trees, you need, you know, a lot more. So, we're penalized. And so, we sort of kind of went back to the table that they had prepared prior. And the only problem I have with this table is we have to put some sort of an escalator clause on it, because thank goodness I led to believe this Title 21 may exist after we're all gone. I mean, look at it, it's going to be 20 years down the road before they find another group of fools to get involved in this again. And so, we need to put some sort of an escalator at it, but they have a value there. Round and try to estimate what the landscaping has worked or anything else they had come up with a value. I don't know whether the value's right or wrong. I could think it's too high, I could think it's too low, but it's something to shoot for, and at least the municipality will have something as we go forward.
Well, I think it's way too low. You can't even landscape topsoil hydroseed, plant a tree, and tree shrubs for $2,500. I think that this is woefully inadequate as far as the surety is concerned. And I also don't agree that this determination shall be made by licensed landscape architect or by a certified arborist. You know, it's very easy. You can get a bid from a landscaping company, and that bid can be used. This is just an opportunity to get more fees, in my opinion. And I really don't feel that maybe we reduce it from 120% to 100% or 90%, but I don't feel the value of this surety is at all adequate for the conditions, the landscaping conditions that we have to deal with.
We're in agreement... I'm in agreement with you that we want some protection on it.
And is this... Is this...
I think the reason for surety is it's a guarantee the third party has a vested financial interest in finishing the project, and if the developer happens to have a bad day, a bad year, and decides you've done, he doesn't want to hang around for two years and move on and retire, that there's something left for the developer to attack without the public paying for it. Although I do agree with Jim that you don't want to penalize someone that overdoes the landscaping. So, I, you know, I do bonds all the time, and for businesses I do, I guess it's a necessary evil. A lot of times, I don't like to go through all the steps and, you know, financial requirements to get them, but at the end of the day, it does protect the public, and it ensures that things get finished. Third-party interest does it. So, I would recommend, maybe as a compromise to that, is that you bond the value only of the minimum requirement.
I'll accept that, Dana, if you...
If you don't, it doesn't penalize someone that goes over and beyond the call to duty.
Okay. Now, that's fine, except are we talking plant materials only? Labor materials for the plant materials? Are we talking topsoil?
Well, again, the topsoil isn't going to go away. And how are you, you know, and who's going to decide the value? That's...
That's what I...
That's the deal. But typically, you have a schedule of values with plants, shrubs, trees, and the topsoil. And so, I think the prudent way would be, you know, the things that... On the topsoil may be the lawn, but if it goes away or dies, it doesn't get serviced or whatever, you know, that's directly connected to the topsoil. And who's to say that the topsoil they brought in is actually...
Topsoil.
Actually, topsoil. Just about... Up here, just about anything grows, but that's neither here nor there. So, you know, again, I would have to go to the list and go to the schedule of values that is presented to the director with the landscape improvements. And I'd just say, you know, bond the minimum that's required for the development, and that handles inflation, it handles all the questions, it doesn't penalize overdoing.
Can I just point out, just so we know we're all on the same page? What we talked about before and what's shown in your red line, blue line, the most recent version of Chapter 7, red line, blue line, with all the recent amendments, is not anything like what's here.
That's right.
Right. I never agreed.
Okay. It's what it says... I don't know if other people brought it, but it says, "For subdivision agreements, commercial development, and multifamily development in excess of eight units on a single lot, a letter of credit escrow performance fund, you know, et cetera, equal to 120% of the value of the installed landscaping shall be provided to the director prior to the installation of the landscaping." So, I guess if we're going to...
We've already addressed this issue, I would say.
Right. But we can still revise it, but I think it should be revised based on...
That.
What you... Yeah. If we want to further revise this, let's revise this. I just don't want to combine the two and get all mixed up.
You know, the 100... I don't know why 120%. That's the first time I've seen any government entity requiring more than the... In reality, the surety or the bonding companies are going to come and repair it. The 20% is just... Is extra someone has to pay, has no meaning. 100% means you'll replace it. It's not the... It's not the... And if a cost... If the municipality has to go replace it, and it costs them a dollar, that's the cost. It's a dollar. Why add another 20% on it? Doesn't... I don't understand that.
My... Okay. My question is, how does the municipality know what value should be on the bond? And I'm trying to look at a little bit about staff coming in. How do they determine? And that's the reason I got where I did. I can be taken away from it, but it's a little bit hard for staff to determine, you know, whether it's a $10,000 or $20,000.
Well, the language as written, it gets determined by a landscape contractor.
You know, that's the ones that... The body and I are both. They are about as quick to go broke as a painting contractor.
Well, but that is the... That is a bid.
That's a standard.
It's a standard. It's a bid.
Right or wrong?
It's a standard.
What typically happens is like with a subdivision agreement, there is a cost estimate done by the engineer that will include landscaping and REA cost prices on the bid tabs that the city has. They standardize on an annual basis, update their bid tabs, landscape and arborist, and that's what you do.
Yeah, but I'm more interested on the private side, where there may be a landscape plan, there's probably a landscape plan, but there may not be an estimate for landscaping that's published ahead of the time.
Well, I'm just saying that the city already has a bid tab schedule, and that's public information, and that can be used to establish what the cost estimate is for the landscaping. And the 20% is typical to a subdivision agreement as well, that you're bonding for, is that you're basing it on the engineer's estimate, there may be some contingencies and other issues, and the city wants to be able to make sure that they can grab the bond and do the work, and 100% be not covered. So, they have a built-in 20% years into the future.
For admin.
But it's... A dollar's a dollar. Replacement, you know, typically, payment performance is regardless of the cost, the performance has to come. And that's typically how it works. Typically, if a bonding company comes in and does it, they're not very efficient at doing it. They're going to run around and hire someone, and then someone's going to come in and charge exorbitant amounts of money to come in and clean up the mess.
So, it'll be 120%?
So, I just... The 20%, I don't gather how that helps.
I think we could probably reach an agreement on 100%, okay? Using this language.
Of 100%? Now, how do we handle the minimum versus what? I mean, that's another valid point. In other words, if we've got the people that go overboard, they should be paying a penalty.
Yeah, but if they go overboard, that's approved, and so, that's what's expected.
Yeah, I would agree with that. That's what's expected, yeah.
I mean, once it's...
If they choose to do that, then they can bond for 100% of those improvements.
Okay.
So, we'll make that change.
Yes.
And is everyone in favor of the other changes to the chart for now? I think let's go to Chapter 10.
Tell us about these five, 10s, and everything on the first page that's going in.
Yes.
Well, most of you saw the response when I asked the question whether or not we had an obligation to have a second public hearing. And Jerry was kind enough to call me when I was a commissioner that said that we would... That we felt an obligation to have a second public hearing. So, we're going to have one, which is scheduled for July... I can't remember the date.
July 9.
July 9, which is in the middle of the Bear Hall Festival. But nevertheless, Sally, I'm sorry.
That's in the middle of Ray's Out of Town Festival, too.
That's the middle of Ray's Out of Town Festival. Well, actually, I've spent quite a bit of time reviewing Chapter 10, and I have had an opportunity to meet with Debbie Oschender, who represents Chukyak Eagle River without it. And I think that we can get through this situation pretty readily. The first one that I would like to address is the Chukyak Eagle River Advisory Board. The first one that I would like to address is the Chugiak Eagle River Advisory Board.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 7 to 61. And as I understand, the Chugiak Eagle River Advisory Board, this is not necessarily precedent-setting. I do believe that Girdwood, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Girdwood does have its own advisory board. This would be made up of a representative by each one of the community councils that represent Chugiak Eagle River. And then each one, there are seven community councils, will have one seat on the advisory board, and then one additional representative from the native village of Ukutna. And I think the important thing to probably understand as far as the public process is concerned, is that if you were a developer, residential or commercial developer, it would most likely be a two-step process. That normally you would go to the community council in which the property was located that you wanted to flat or rezone, but this, as I would interpret this, would also require you to go to, or not require you, but would strongly urge you to go to the Chugiak Eagle River Advisory Board as well. Dan, you're saying no?
No, unless it involves multiple community councils. If it's within one community council, there's no problem.
Okay.
If it goes over the boundary of the other community councils, that is when you fall into a.
Unless it's a large retail establishment.
Unless it's a large retail establishment, which would be over 25,000.
This does add one more step to the process.
Yes.
And the process right now is very cumbersome. I mean, if, I could support the idea of them being an advisory board, but saying I've got to go to the community council and then take that, and I may have to go to multiple community councils, gather all that in, and then go to the advisory board.
And actually, the advisory board will be a benefit to developers, putting in the 25,000-foot retail space, in that you aren't getting one community council's viewpoint, you're getting a cross-section of all of the community councils and the native village of Ukutna, from a community standpoint, who may support your project more than the one community council that it's in.
That might be impacted the most.
So why don't they do this in Anchorage?
Because Chugiak Eagle River is smarter.
They got to do their own chapter.
Actually, you have to do it in Girdwood.
Right.
Well, I understand, I know, but.
We thought you guys were going to see.
Jerry?
You know, we need to clarify a little bit, to make clear what Girdwood has, they have a board of supervisors, they legitimately legislative created, they are a board of supervisors, they, in the code, they delegate to their land use, plan committee to review applications, so that's why they function basically as a community council. We had a question of the composition of this thing, we asked the legal department, I don't know if they ever responded back because it was not clear in the code, what authority this entity would have, and over the community councils, which are legislated.
So they're advisory, that's how I read it, advisory only.
Yeah, and we have the language finished for chapter, or type 2, and legal has that language, we can get it to you.
Okay, tell us who you are, I'm sorry, we didn't go around the room and introduce ourselves.
I'm Ryan Stensel.
Okay.
My company is the primary and today responsible for writing the chapter.
Okay.
And Dan works for me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, so my, yes, my concern is the owner's additional burden and costs associated, is there some way that the, that the public information, the meetings, the hearings all be combined, that it doesn't have to be separate?
It would be up to the developer, if he wanted to combine, then I don't see anything that would uphold it from that.
Is this the wish of the, I mean, you've gone around and talked to a lot of people and obviously this is something people wanted.
The advisory committee was something that the community also wanted.
Also, the more broader base, if you have, if we had it in Anchorage and you had the hillside district versus a larger area of more diverse opinions, that could be a benefit to a large development.
We have, yeah, we happen to have on our Planning and Zoning Commission, the president for the Chugiak Eagle River Chamber of Commerce, so I'm going to ask him what his opinion is.
You got a question behind you?
Debbie's running.
Right.
Hello?
Connie?
Hello?
If I.
Hi.
Yes?
I'm Randy, I'm the president of the Chugiak Eagle River Consortium and Committee of Councils.
Okay.
So speaking for the community, we look at a disparity even today under 21, because our land use regulations are, even though, even though a lot of things are the same out in the Chugiak Eagle River area, it's, there's not the same oversight provided in that area today if there isn't in town, for a lot of different reasons. But what we see happening is when we come and we speak in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the Assembly, or we're talking to staff, it's like we have to start all over again and relearn, but whoever we're talking to in the city, and I know you guys can appreciate that, Chapter 10 is substantially different, or brings a substantial amount of difference, and we see, the individual community, we see a need to be able to weigh in on this difference at this point. And whether we're weighing in as supportive of a developer, or as supportive of, however we see it, we can give a point, point of thought, we think we can bring a focus, where Chapter 10 focuses, and why we think this is, this is bad, and we're laying it. A lot of times we see the fishy snake, whether advisory or not, and we don't have a complete understanding of how it is different, how the Chugiak Eagle River area is, whether it's land use enforcement officer, or member of staff.
I just want to assure you that almost every petitioner feels exactly the same way that you do, even if they're from Anchorage or Girdwood, and not just each representative.
Chugiak Eagle River Consortium. So, so what, why isn't that the group that's here?
Well, it is, basically. Maybe we should back up a little bit. The Consortium of Community Councils, all six community councils from Mulholland North, got together and created the Consortium of Councils to write Chapter 10, and then the consortium disbanded, but like basically.
Sunset.
Sunset. But you end up with the same membership to that advisory committee, it's still the same six community councils putting someone forward, we're just adding one more person from the native village of Ukutna to that.
But this doesn't sunset.
The consortium itself does, it's just a work group.
This wouldn't.
No.
And how is that different? Are you still, are all these community councils still part of the Federation of Community Councils?
Yes.
Like a subset within a set.
The same as the road board in Chugiak Eagle River. You have a person selected from community councils and from different areas of the community who are then put forward and recommended by, no, recommended by mayor and confirmed by Assembly.
Okay. Peter, what's your take on this?
As I recall, this is fairly strongly supported out there, there were one pretty strong discussion about whether the chamber should have a seat, but I don't think that works well. But I thought it was pretty well, pretty strong support out there.
So, so this, this says the board shall provide review and make recommendations. So everything, that means, that means everything.
On AB.
Yeah, that means everything, they have to review and make recommendations on everything.
No, just the things listed, AB.
That's not what it says. On matters including the following.
The community looks at Chapter 10 as a living document, it's going to go on forever and ever and ever, and that's, you'll see questions that came up from our last planning and zoning meeting where, you know, why do you have 21 new zones and stuff like that? We really don't, we have, like, and I'm circling back to this question, but like, here in Anchorage, we have R6, you take the exact same code for the R6 zone, and you put CER6 in front of it. And so when R6 is, there's amendments made in the future to R6, unless it goes through the advisory board, CER6 is not going to change. And so that's more than what a, you know, community council would handle, CER6 would be its own zone.
So, so it says all boards, municipality and its boards and commissions, so that tells me all of them, right? It says all recommendations for everything that goes on, and then my other question is, who pays the load?
The same as the road board, it's same model, just.
Does the road board go through everything? Because this is everything, this, roads would go through this because it's including, do you read that? Roads would go through this?
I think, number one.
It says, that require public notice to multiple community councils.
Now, I'll read three, Connie. Shall provide review and make recommendations to the MOA on matters including the following. I might start to agree if it said on the following.
Or may.
Or may. But this, whether it's your intent or not, this says you're going to review everything.
And make recommendations.
Yeah.
I don't know, as a volunteer, I don't know how you can monitor the planning boards, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the zoning boards and appeals and examiners, and the Urban Design Commission.
It's the same.
Well, that's your answer to the question. I saw it.
It's the same public notice that the planning department sends out, and so in their computer program, there would just be another line that would go out.
Well, no, I get that, but then, but then how are you going to respond to all of that? You're a volunteer, you're a volunteer board, you have no staff, or do you have staff, or are you planning on getting legislative money?
That'll be up to the hearing as the advisory board is implemented.
Because, see, I don't know how you're, how you're going to be able to respond to all of these cases.
Well, it's up to the board whether they do or not, the advisory board.
Well, I think, you know, as a.
The shall.
As part of the Planning and Zoning Commission, okay, we pay attention to whether or not the community council responds to us, okay? So if we have a situation in Eagle River where there's a case before Planning and Zoning, or the planning board, I can't speak for the planning board, but maybe Stacy can, we pay attention to whether or not the groups that are involved in it, where, in the neighborhood, whether or not they're going to, whether or not they respond. And so, I mean, I think you've created a horrendous task for yourself to say that you're going to respond to all of the cases that come before the Urban Design Commission, that come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, that come before the planning board, and all that sort of thing. Dan, you're shaking your head, you're not.
Not all cases, it's only those cases which all went through Chugiak Eagle River and.
I understand that, yeah.
And the advisory board has the ability to say, yes, we want comment on this, or no, we don't.
But it says shall, it doesn't give you that option by saying shall.
Well, we're suggesting if it says may, then you have that ability then to decide
if you want to or not. So we're suggesting a word change.
You could almost, if you, if you, not with this, you could almost say that we couldn't even look at it until after, after it was reviewed and recommended, whether it's no comment or anything, you would have to physically make a recommendation of some sort.
Jared?
This kind of is the rationalization, the legal opinion would expect to be afforded decently, it's, you know, it's not legislative, it was created, if it weren't, it was a story, how do we notice them, what do we expect from them, what's the commission, the boards expecting them, that just seemed to be later on top of the community council concept that did not seem to have, quote, legal.
Well, I'm all for more input from the public, just not to bog down the system and make another.
Why don't we pull the, or put this off until Wednesday, maybe at the beginning of the work session, and I can have the text that we worked out with the planning department for Title II, the actual implementation of the advisory board and how they operate. I didn't bring that text with me.
All right, so, just for your information, this is the work session on Chapter 10, and the meeting on Wednesday night is for our deliberations. So you need to be able to circulate any comments you want to us very soon, okay?
When we take them to July, what, Chapter 10?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's, I made a, I made a mistake, I misspoke, correct me.
Yeah, because you've got another public hearing July 9th.
Yeah, we have a public hearing July 9th, I apologize, we have a public hearing July 9th. Okay.
But on Wednesday, we're deliberating other chapters.
Wednesday, we're deliberating other chapters. I am overwhelmed.
Right, then, keep pushing.
Is Terry included in the deliberations on this Wednesday?
No, no.
Which gives you a bunch more time, right?
That's going to be a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Our concern here is, right now, we're struggling to keep up with the March of Articles of Title 21.
Right.
And we can see you guys falling into the same kind of trap. I mean, if, you know, you say we're only going to look at stuff that comes, that involve Chugiak Eagle River, somebody has to look at everything and say, yes, this does involve or no, it doesn't. Somebody has to make that first step, and then you go on, and it just.
Yeah, we've spent probably about three hours on this with the planning department in working out the text for the change.
Are you guys cool with that, though? With the may rather than the shall?
Yeah, that's fine.
Can I ask a simple question? Is it Ukutna within the MOA boundaries?
Yes.
And just so I can make a comment, a public hearing.
Do you want to, do you want to put a caveat there so that everyone knows that you represent Ukutna?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Caveat that everybody knows I represent Ukutna.
Thank you.
The, I think the clarification that would be desired would be if it was exclusively Anchorage, which is the land and zoning organization versus the native village of Ukutna, which is a tribal organization that covers the whole thing.
Oh, you mean on the membership of.
This is the village.
I just said they're totally separate, I didn't say.
Right, right. It's not the corporation, this is the village. This is the village, big difference. They don't always agree.
Which is it supposed to be?
It's supposed to be the village. It's the village.
Yeah.
That wants then to be spoken.
And it's perfectly chosen that way, as the village rather than the corporation.
Yeah, we understand that. All right, well, I'll just weigh in with a final comment, which is, as a developer in the Eagle River area, I really don't mind the advisory.
Not including.
Yes.
They should take up including.
If I email you the text from Section 2, the actual implementation of this advisory board?
This person and this person, and, you know, the planning.
You mean about me?
Yeah, 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 okay, all right. I'll just, yeah, I just want to weigh in as a developer in the Eagle River area, I don't mind the concept of the advisory board, as long as it's a may as opposed to a shall. I don't know what's going to happen to your advisory board, really, quite frankly, if you have no funding and you have no resources and you're, you know, the Federation of Community Councils gets legislative money to support itself, and money, I think, from the municipality of Anchorage. It's been my experience as, if you don't have staff support, you're not going to exist for a really long period of time, really, quite frankly. So if you want this, if you want this advisory board to be real, you're going to have to figure out a way to fund it on a part-time basis to get some, to get some assistance, because otherwise it's not going to happen and it'll fall by the wayside. That's my personal opinion. Okay, moving on. We want to talk quite a bit about zoning districts. I get that you want to have the CER in front of the zoning districts. We have, you were here when you, when you heard us discussing the various zoning districts. For what we've done so far, as far as changes are concerned. For what we've done so far, as far as changes are concerned, I, I'd like to know whether or not the consortium supports the changes that we have made to the provisionally adopted chapters as it relates to zoning. Specifically, as it relates to the R3, the RO, and the voluntary mixed use as opposed to what the provisionally adopted chapters are. That's sort of a basic platform from which we can go on and discuss the other use changes that you want to have, the additions. I get some additional setback requirements and all that sort of thing. Understand that you have some unique circumstances in, particularly in the Chugak area. But I, I think the commission would like to know whether or not you support the basic premises that have already been discussed regarding zoning and uses.
Quick answer is yes. The consortium does support the actions the planning and zoning commission is taking. But for all of us, I think, the first time that we're going to get to see your recommendations and how the assembly committee is going to take them and everything else is when we get back into this room at Title 21 Committee.
Right. But basically, you are in support of the actions and discussions we've had to date. Okay, all right.
Can I ask, can I ask, Jerry? Jerry, is this going to simplify the handling of Eagle River from staff perspective?
Well, I don't think it, I don't think it complicates it or simplifies it. They have similar zoning districts. They basically put some prefixes in there. The problem, a bit of a problem I see, the nuances that are changed. These zoning districts don't exist today. How do you propose to perpetuate them? Because they don't go across, they don't seamlessly go across the districts that you're proposing as to what's in effect today.
Actually, they do. Your staff had us put it in on Chapter 10 in the table that's there, a direct correlation between the districts.
So they looked at each district seamlessly.
There are no incongruities between what's being proposed, the changes that you're proposing and what exists today? Because that, that's why, I mean, you have added some additional things into those zoning districts.
Just rural commercial is the only difference.
Well, rural, rural commercial is the only created district, basically.
Everything else was greater products.
My staff just now gave them the review of it, so...
Doesn't.
Well, there are some differences in density because the Chugak-Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, it does not dovetail into current Title 21. So these, so our densities in the zoning districts do follow the comprehensive plan.
So there's, I think we've talked about a number of things. So first of all, the table of uses are not the same. Transitional living is listed in certain districts in the bowl, but it's not listed in your table of uses. And because it's different format, it's, it's mind-numbingly hard to compare between the two. But the, in terms of the, the districts with the CE before them, I think that there's going to be a lot of, you know, I'm, I think, I'll just say it, that it seems that if, if someone from the public or staff wants to know what they can do in their district CE R1, then what they'll have to do is look at Chapter 10, and then they'll have to compare it to the similar chapter in the bowl, because Chapter 10 is just about the differences. And so you'll always have to be going back and forth between the bowl code and Chugak River's code. That's just the fact of the matter. And, and it's, it's, it's going to be confusing, it's going to be hard, you know, they may, you know, the consortium may have done a great job of trying to get them to fit together, but it, it just exists. It's, it's not going to be, because you're always going to be comparing. The Girdwood code stands on its own. The bowl code stands on its own. But the, the code for Eagle River is sort of, you know, like, but you'll always have to be going back and forth, looking at two different codes to know what you really have to comply with, what your regulations are.
Well, actually, at Girdwood you do too, because you have to go back to the traffic section and the landscape section to back in the Anchorage code.
But, but the zoning districts stand on their own.
And the alternative with Chapter 10 was to literally copy and paste everything from bowl code in and, and change it. So instead of having 61 pages, you have...
600.
Exactly. And it was actually the planning department who asked that it be done this way.
And so Title 21 is included by reference as a chapter 10. But we're dealing with the additions, changes, modifications, and stuff. And so instead of cutting and pasting Title 21 in there with their exceptions and creating a new, a brand-new, whole encyclopedia of ordinances, we reference back to Title 21. I think it's very, very clear, and I, I don't think it's as challenging as you're making it up.
Well, I'm just about clarity, you know, because it costs a lot of money to, you have to have somebody go through all your research, hire somebody, get support, and start the process. And if there's a, if there's no clarity as best as you can, then, then it becomes subjective to the whims of whoever. And I don't think that's fair. And I don't think the residents of any community want that. And I don't think that someone, building something wants that. So within reason, I think, without having 600 meetings.
So for clarity purposes, you would support the abridged, the exceptions and the changes?
Yeah.
Okay?
Then as long as the community supports it.
We had very detailed discussions on this. Should we rewrite the Title 21 or the new Title 21 and include it all? Or should we just make it a, a document that takes some sections of it and for clarity, bring it on a complicated issue, bring it forward? Ryan actually got very frustrated with us on trying to decide paragraph by paragraph how to do that. And I think the committee spoke out and wanted to be very clearly referenced back to the new Title 21 as it's developed, and it would be a very clear, concise list of changes, modifications, deletions, additions.
Well, while we're discussing this, because I think it's appropriate, while we have this in the zoning discussion, one of the things that concerns me is that Chugak-Eagle River is not just a rural area, but yet there does seem to be an emphasis on that. I've worked in downtown Eagle River, and I continue to work in downtown Eagle River. And when I am selling, quote unquote, downtown Eagle River, I compare it to downtown Anchorage, because you are a population of 30,000 people now. You do have a very urban area. It may not have, you know, a 15-story office building, but it does have retail, it does have office, it does have restaurants, movie theaters, banks, the athletic club. It has all of those items that you would find in, in urban area. And I also have a medium density, a large-medium density development in Eagle River Valley. And what I find throughout this Chapter 10 and is a real emphasis on rural and the rural character. And I just want to have some affirmation from those of you that have worked on this chapter, that you have a recognition that Eagle River-Chugak is more than just large lots, residential development.
Very much so. You know, for the, the zoning districts and the density, we went directly from the comprehensive, the Eagle River Comprehensive Plan. And for downtown Eagle River, we basically stayed out of everything and let the overlay district rule.
Okay.
But just to add though, the R's and the R4 district, your most dense district is the R3. You've eliminated the R4 district.
Yeah, and that, that's, the R4 district by design is for midtown Anchorage.
Yeah, and if you look at this, the way the, the Eagle River Comprehensive Plan laid out its dwelling units and acre, dwelling units per acre matches exactly with the zoning districts that we used. Their comprehensive plan didn't go into mixed use and some of the super-high density that Anchorage has, just in its difference.
Actually, at the back of the comprehensive, at the back of the Chugak-Eagle River Comprehensive Plan, it devotes quite a bit of time talking about mixed use development. I can point out those pages to you.
You mean for the honorable districts and the...
Yeah, the implementation, it's not just bowls, but the implementation strategies that talks about mixed use.
And we did have in the RC district, mixed use written in. The RO is designed for mixed use. But we were asked to delete that last sentence on mixed uses in half the yard area. We'd be concerned.
Yeah, and it doesn't prohibit mixed use in any way. I think that our thinking is very similar to the overriding thinking right now on mixed use in Anchorage to allow it. But as a developer sees the vision, he works with his architect, his landscapers and all that, to come up with a plan rather than mandating mixed use in certain areas.
Dan, can I ask a question to you? We have been drastically under, under taken rewriting the portions of Title 21 in uses and accessory uses and everything else. And I think the version you guys have been working from is a couple versions old. How do we reconcile what we're going to be probably debating and possibly eliminating or approving or whatever our game plan is for Wednesday night? How does that, how do you factor that into this thing, particularly in your charts?
On our zoning districts and uses?
Yeah, stuff like that.
Well, actually, your charts are beginning to look more like ours and bringing them together. And really, it's going to be at the Title 21 Committee where we sit down. But we've stayed in synchronization with Mr. Coffey and the mayor's office and everybody has this come forward.
And Dan is the consultant for the consortium, and he has been a faithful attendee.
No, he had, that's a, I addressed the question to him. But I mean, I see whatever we adopt, I guess I would plead that that get corrected before or revised. Your, your Chapter 10 to follow whatever we adopt before the July 9th discussion and adoption is yours.
So then what we would need is that you adopt here on Wednesday.
Yeah.
For at least possible convenience, that it be emailed to the last one, so that we could go through and do it line by line.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I'm, it's, we've got two cars going down the road about 90 miles an hour, and we're trying to hand off this baby. And it's...
It's the hopes of the community, Chugak-Eagle River community, that, that Title, the Assembly's Title 21 Committee is reviewing the, whatever S version we're talking about if we find change, because I know that's not, S version isn't necessary. But there, that Chapter 10 is implicated into the, the recommended changes from the TNC at the same time.
That's our, that's all I'm asking here.
That is our goal as well.
Yeah, well, and the document that, I think, the planning department gave you in this latest packet with the red line, that's actually a version that's internal, and I explained that to the planning department. That's not the version that was at the public hearing that we had last year. I have the, the color-coded changes that were made. But the red line that you're actually looking at takes for granted that you guys accept and make every single change that we recommended in this document. In our internal document, that document will grow. And so when you guys make your recommendations on Wednesday, when we do the line-by-line recommendation or reconciliation, then those will, say, be in green in our internal document so that we can track it as it goes forward.
Does that answer your question, Jim?
Yeah, I just, it's a concern. I mean, trying to get everything together, so at one point in time, we're all at sea.
We'll move on.
Right, right. All right. So on page 20, under industrial districts, this does, as I understand it, allow businesses in the I-1 district. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can I give you another question?
Page 20 of 61. It does allow, in the light industrial, it does allow businesses?
Yes.
Okay.
Limited commercial uses, or handled complementively industrial use.
Okay, all right. I am assuming also, you do have a planned community district, which is a good thing, but you have no objection to having the cluster housing ordinance as part of Chapter 10 as well? It is, it is the recommendation the Planning and Zoning Commission to put the cluster housing ordinance back into Title 21. It was not there in the provisionally adopted chapter.
Those are individual lots because of cluster.
Cluster, yeah. All right. Okay.
On page 21, paragraph 4B2, it reads, "No use shall be constructed or operated so as to cause excessive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, humidity, heat, or glare."
That's current code.
Is that, is, where is excessive defined?
Wasters.
Yeah. Well, there's a whole discussion here about the health department.
Yeah. You have, you have limitations on health code for sound, noise, vibration.
You're not going to be able to solve that.
Yeah, that's just...
I'm quoting it out.
Existing code.
You're only at the property line.
Yeah.
I asked Tim, since you represent Eklutna, I, I guess you don't represent the Eklutna village.
You don't.
All right. But, you know, this overlay district, do you have any knowledge or comment? This area has been, this has been reserved. Do you have anything that you want to say about it?
We have developed a second draft that they were restricted. We're going to the Board of Directors for the change. We have their Mexico meeting, and we get comments back. We've been meeting with a variety of people from the village and from the board to get the language and the uses. And it's effectively taking the defined area, which is basically west and northwest of the highway and the area from Eklutna River north up to where the picnic ground is, and taking that area and establishing it as a specific district that has different types of uses or accommodations within that. One of the key issues is that within that area, you would preclude the city from adopting an ACOM plan or a trails plan or anything, a public improvement like a road and/or a public trail that would bifurcate or disrupt the village holdings itself. And identifying a bunch of the land that's piled off ground all the way to saltwater is used for subsystems gathering, and it will remain that way. It accommodates the ability on a legal lot that you can meet with health and fire safety departments, that you can have multiple structures on a lot, so that you can have multi-generational living situations that's common within the tribal culture. So it's like that. There's an allowance in some areas for a pole barn or a community building, and those kinds of things as accessory or community uses for congregate firewood storage, so that it's private because they do that a lot. A lot of the work that is cleared up for the Chugak Inc. projects is hauled to the village site itself and where the accommodations paid for subsystems firewood tech. And it needs to force that over.
It's not, it was my understanding and intent that Chapter 10 would go through with that reserve. And I've talked to Tim before, as soon as he's got something, that I'll introduce that as a separate ordinance to fill in the hole. So you guys really don't need to worry about that part.
All right. Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Then you can see it very soon.
Dan, could you talk about the difference in dimensions, like, say, for example, in the R6?
We went over this and over this, talking about going to the one acre as they get here in town, and wish the community councils, particularly, but also the other community councils, excited back at the A and F board. back at the eight and a quarter. And so we end up with the same 300 and some odd nonconforming lots that we have out there now through the current planning practice and base law and state law.
Why?
A couple of things. One is there's a legal opinion that was written by Dennis Wheeler in his prior term with the municipality that described how setbacks in the center line are measured. And the consortium and others agree that that practice should continue and the impacts to, if that were to be changed, the impacts are basically taken. And so we needed to stay with the legal opinion that Mr. Wheeler wrote. And in decreasing a lot size to an acre, we legalized most of the rural properties out there rather than grandfathering them as a way to eventually bring them into conformance and run them out of existence.
See, one thing that we did retain, what we did do is we dropped the minimum width down. The reason for that is at your current 150 feet, when you're, you have a corner lot, one lot ends up being less than an acre within property lines. The other one ends up being just at an acre and a quarter counting half the other one. So by allowing them to move that property line, you can give a level playing field. You can get both properties very close to an acre and, and so you're not ending up with one lot at 36,000 square feet. So that's why we narrowed up that. We gave them that ability to narrow off.
This was the most discussed issue in all of Chapter 10, which is the lot size for our section.
Because you have so many nonconforming.
Because of just the way that everything is interpreted and there was the opinion made by the municipal attorney, I don't know what year that was.
2000?
That was reversed or set aside, right? Or no, just postponed.
What else to do?
See you later.
That's right.
It's in bulk code.
In Virchwood and Chugyak area, we have the BLM lots. Traditionally, historically, you would see it all over the place where they've split those lots into two lots. And without having a minimum or reducing the minimum lot size for the width, you would end up with one conforming lot and one nonconforming lot. And by minimizing the width of the lot or lowering the minimum or the width of the lot and creating two equal sized lots. And we felt that, that it's important to encourage large lot development in the area. That's the wishes of the community and by making developers and making it more economical to develop two standardized lots, that it would encourage large lot development the way it is today. If we have one conforming and one nonconforming.
So aren't most of these BLM tracks, aren't they five acres? Were they originally five acres and now, and then, are you, no?
Five or two and a half. Most of your Virchwood are two and a half.
That's where you go with a one and a quarter?
Yes. But when you put your easements into the one and a quarter, you have, you lose money on lots. It's just up to you.
Jerry, do you have a comment to make as the former plating officer for many years?
Legal opinion, at least of respect for this issue.
I'm going to ask, because that was the only legal opinion. Never heard you do that.
That's a mistake.
It has to do a lot, part of it, how do we measure setbacks from property line? Where is the property line when you have a BLM reservation? So that's part of it. The other part of it, you know, they, they aren't two and a half acre lots. You can get them down to acre and a quarter. One of the, how like Dan said, in the quarter lot, it's smaller. It could be as low as 35,000 square feet or so, taking in half the budding right of way. It hasn't been a problem, but creating the running for lots in size and growth is probably okay. And it, and it probably addresses the setback issue. So there's no great, we don't have a great issue with that.
Well, Jerry, if I can comment, I think that, I think that staff is concerned about if you, if you allow continued use of half the budding right of way, but then reduce the minimum required lot area, then you end up with potentially smaller lots than you would in the bowl. And the issue with that is that with allowing two home occupations, allowing fabric structures of 8,000 square feet, allowing diesel engine trucks to be parked there.
It's going to be still two rural lots, they'll be more equal in size. It's really, it has to do with appropriate setbacks. What's the setback that you're, where do you measure from the property line? So it's not a, it's not a great deal.
It's not a big issue?
You know, well, I'm sorry. Well, you know, he says, you know, we have, respectfully, you know, we have three written opinions on this. And I think we end up with three written opinions when we allow policy to direct our codes. And what we need to do is have our codes develop to address our policies. And it's, we can't flip back and forth depending on who's in, who's in the planning department and who's the current administrative administration of the municipality.
Well, that's just something that we're not capable of solving this evening.
Yeah.
But the community wants that.
Right.
If you guys want it so you can circulate with you guys, this is the legal opinion that it's based on and it's what the planning department follows today. So this is existing code that we have just continued.
Okay. All right.
I have one other question.
Sure.
In districts where you've limited your density, you don't, you don't speak to the ability to do a higher density or a 3D or a cluster. Are you talking, do you have a problem there?
Are you talking in master plan?
In CR1, CR1A, it's because you've limited the density into the zoning district itself.
Yeah. That was the wishes of the consortium. It's to, they, they wanted to maintain, or we suggested that they go to the maximums on those areas.
For the comp plan.
For the comp plan up to six in the R1. But their wish was to keep it, to do that. Well, you, we've redlined it up to six minutes in here. So we have, we haven't had that. But in the R1A4, which is, which is what they wanted, they wanted the R1A to be.
And in Anchorage, what would the R1A be allowed if four? So what we really need is a comparison chart because this gets to the issue that concerns me, which is, you know, there are, there are urban and medium density areas in the Chugyak-Eagle River area. And Chugyak-Eagle River is an important growth area for residential development. Let's just be perfectly frank about it. You've got the most land and probably the best land left within the bowl. And I don't really want to see your densities in urban areas downgraded.
Fair enough.
No. So Dan, could we ask you to do sort of a comparison chart?
Yeah, because I get confused.
I'm, I'm getting confused myself, so, okay.
I've got two questions. Jerry, would it simplify something or make it more complex if we somehow identified which legal opinion in this clarified it? This is based upon legal opinion of such and such at this time? And we have it in code then? Would that?
I have a question for you to ask you before.
Yeah, yeah.
Would that help us or hinder us?
Well, those legal opinions have developed for different reasons at different times. So that's why they're different. But if we're talking about lot size, or talking about lot line, or talking about setbacks, you know, you can easily do that by code establishing.
Okay, okay. Question two is for Dan. Your total west boundary of this section is Fort Ridge. Is that correct? There's no, there's no place, there is no place that you physically touch the bowl. No? So, so there is no place we, I don't want to have a lot someplace where, yeah, we're arguing back and forth for which light it's on. So it's either Fort Ridge or Chugyak State Park.
All right. And on that, we're going to take a break. All right. We'll be back at 7:30. Thanks.
We like our bumper.
Yeah.
Did you buy anything?
No, I didn't. Did you buy anything?
I bought first truck roll.
Oh, did you? See, I wanted to do that. Lottie and I wanted to do that together. But Dan, is it Harry or?
The one we just talked about tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, see, I said her in table, so I said, okay, I'm going to fly this because you have to drive. He says, okay.
Wow. So how many people are seeing this?
I'm probably just.
Yeah. I really wanted to.
Oh, it is fun. I could have done it a million times. Oh, yeah. You know, I'm probably giving this one.
Does he give the additional changes to?
Oh, I don't hear you have any. I just say that.
So Wednesday?
By chapter? Which chapter?
Um, online. And also.
Well, the devil said no.
Yeah, because he's in your house. I cannot get my. I'm so crazy. I can't pay my for one. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because he's in your house. I cannot get my. I'm so crazy. I can't pay my for one. Yeah, because you.
I'm doing it during the day.
Yeah, and do it. Yeah, because he's in your house. Yeah, because he's in your house. I cannot get my. I'm so crazy. I can't pay my for one. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because he's in your house. I cannot get my. I'm so crazy. I can't pay my for one. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because he's in your house. I cannot get my. I'm so crazy. I can't pay my for one. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because he's in your house. I cannot get my. I'm so crazy. I can't pay my for one. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because he's in your house. I cannot get my. I'm so crazy. I can't pay my for one. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because he's in your house. I cannot get my. I'm so crazy. I can't pay my for one. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because you. Yeah, because he's in your house. I cannot get my. I'm so crazy. I can't pay my for one. Yeah, because you. 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 All the prior planning zones. So, if there was number, it came from staff. If they have a bar, it came from the prior planning zoning. So, with respect to each of these, there's a comment like this. Don't accept, we revise the sure amendment eleven, which would be amendment eleven on this chart. Change this. We accepted this, accept this. Well, these are my guess, they're based on what's... So, see, accept, accept that we changed twenty percent. Besides, so... To understand what we did with the chapter, you really have to look at it.
Right, well, Carrie is...
Or you just...
I'll get the salary tomorrow.
Because in this, all you do is read it. If something is in blue and, and deleted like that, and it's planning zone, you should decide to delete that. If it's in red, it's an administration amendment. And if it's deleted in red, you know, if you just kind of have to, if it's in yellow, it's a technical amendment. But this then incorporates, so you can actually read how something is connected. Well, if simply, because we checked it, you know. But, so this is all blue, so that means it's all this. So, it's all...
And we're told we finally...
Here's red, so that's all the administration. And there's a lot where it's combined, with some red, some blue. That's kind of the scheme that we've done in figuring out, you know.
So, I wanted to ask the chapter, try to make it understandable. What's, what's four?
It's impossible to get the perceived...
Well, we want, I think, we want to...
Um...
Not, not all of them, but if I ask for them, they're available.
Right.
I would ask, I would ask. But I have to ask. I think that it is, as of Wednesday, I think it is. So, he's kind of put that out, actually.
I would think that if it was all in packets, it would be a public...
That's why I think so. But, um...
Having such a, you know, having this committee under recording, it's so bad. Um, that it... It's true that I have to stand up.
I, I would think that it would be all available. And I would think that it would be all be available. You know, we did it Wednesday. They started to have it because everybody wants to sit there and see what's at the substance. And probably, yeah.
Are we scheduled to do this on Wednesday? Are they gonna take the final action?
Well, what we did is, when you had the workforce, okay? The workforce, we did a little... When I was in commission, it was...
Hi, good? Good? Yeah. Nice weather. I almost got a sunburn this weekend.
Yeah. It was really nice. Yeah.
Do you have anything nice for your daughter?
Um, I know, I... Yeah, the one in the committee is a hall.
Don't touch it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I took my dad to the car show, uh, at Bailey's.
I'm getting warm.
Yeah, it was huge. It was huge. Yeah. Really, thirty or forty different cars. A lot of them were like Detroit, um, you know, fifties cars. And, uh, my dad loves that because he's, he's from there. So, he remembers, you know, racing those cars. Sounds good. Yeah, and then we went to Table Sex, uh, for dinner. I had been there. My folks really liked that.
Good.
Yeah, my folks liked it a lot. It's, uh, their pasta was awesome. It's like homemade pasta. It was a nice town.
Oh, good, yeah. We did, my stuff's always for dinner.
Uh-huh.
So, um, yeah.
Did you guys make something nice, or...
I just made a little, like, a pasta. I made some, I tried to make a dessert that I... Yeah, like, I don't know. You know how it is, you just kind of take a stab at it.
What'd you make?
I made tabby oak pudding, scratch, which is kind of fun to make from scratch. We had a, you know, oil.
I'm not mad at you.
Yeah. I don't know. My stuff's a little bit lighter fluid. I wish she'd lighten up just a little bit.
Yeah.
So, um...
My niece never...
Yeah, you know, it's like anything weird textured, things like that, you know, it was a texture on the type of yogurt. It just put her on...
Can you try and blow their mind with your next, uh...
Yeah.
Try and shoot the moon and just go up the greatest thing you can think of.
Yeah, and then they make carrot cake and they were all, you know, she was all that. I was like, well, there's something that's got weird textures to it. So, we figured...
Offer them a sweet pie or something.
That sounds good. Yeah. She was over with her new motorcycle. She's got one of these, um, Ducati Monsters or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've seen them on the road.
Yeah, she's really into it.
Really? How old is she?
Uh, twenty.
Okay. That's a fast motorcycle.
Yeah. Yeah.
See, we've been arguing...
She still live in the valley.
Twenty-five or fifteen.
Or back to twenty-five.
Yeah, we're the first... Oh, we don't know that. It's, it's...
And which are we?
It's a decade.
Yeah. Better than a moped, though. It's a safer motorcycle.
Yeah. Yeah, we want a new rule.
For vertical, you can hire a helmet or something. Leather.
Yeah, it's kind of really nice one. They're super light, not like carbon, and they're like less than two pounds. So, it's amazing how much better they are.
Cause she learned how to maintain some of it and do some of the work on it.
I don't know, but I know that if she asked her dad, she'd say, "No, you're yourself." So, here, here's your tools. You know, come on over and help yourself. So, yeah.
Motorcycle, too.
Yeah. Tody's really intense. She grew up home.
Cool.
Yeah. I think we're up motorcycles, too.
Um, around me, my folks didn't let me have one. Um, I'm from North Pole.
I don't have a gavel, but let's get started again. Thanks.
Kids were flipping up and floating up and... Cory.
Was that you? Thank you, Jim.
All right. Um... We need to discuss a, a couple of controversial items. On page forty-three, transportation and connectivity. The connectivity index has been eliminated in the provisionally adopted chapters, uh, for Anchorage. So, I don't think that's an issue. But we get to discuss dumpsters again. So, on page forty-four, screening, refuse collection. Um, I, I've read this three times. I'm still confused. So, could I hear it from the consultant in terms of what these two, a dump screening for refuse collection needs? What can you do, what can't you do?
Well, in Class A, which will be, um, the downtown core area and up through R five. Uh, single family, two and three family on lots of, less than forty thousand square feet shall not use dumpsters. That was majority vote of the consortium. Uh, with the exception for construction or remodeling. Uh, and then it talks about the screening requirements. Uh, and then Class B, which is your R five and up rural residential districts. Dumpsters are permitted and shall be screened.
I get all that, but I don't get the first paragraph. Shall be adequately screened from a budding streets in a manner approved by the utility.
Yeah. It has to be, the design and the makeup of the enclosure has to be approved by the utility. Even here in the bowl, it has to be approved by the utility.
The utility being?
The garbage collection.
The garbage collector. Whether it's, uh...
Private?
Solid waste or it's waste management. Radiated.
Okay.
If you don't, for example, if you don't have your doors open, they just look like, they're not open. They're just on the screening or something like that. All garbage companies are that way. If you don't meet their criteria, they do it like, they don't pick up your garbage. We're just recognizing that, that people...
Dan, can you speak to why this, why it shouldn't be the same as the bowl? Why, why it just shouldn't incorporate what, what's proposed?
Well, in the meeting that we had with Waste Management, Solid Waste Services back two thousand ten, I don't remember when that was. Uh, in this room, uh, we, the agreement was that whenever you put one of those things in, the applicant would go down to Solid Waste Services or to Waste Management. They would sign off on it, or they would give them what they needed, and then they would incorporate those in their plans. Uh, this is just stating that you have to go through that process, letting them know upfront before you start to design and come in for your building.
Okay. Any questions? Because I was the only one that didn't get it. Okay, off street parking and loading, parking lots of...
I guess, can I go back to that?
Yeah.
Have you looked at what we did or what we, what the commission did with respect to screening? Cause it's, I'd say it's a lot different. I mean...
Okay.
Than what's here.
Okay, tell us.
Well, I'd have to go back and look for sure what was finally agreed to, but I, and it hasn't been finally agreed to, but as proposed. Um, well, existing, there's grandfather, existing properties are grandfather. There's, um, there's no reference to utility, approved by the utility. There's, uh, it's, to me, it just strikes me as being a lot different.
Being owners, more owners.
Yes.
Maybe we could make, and we suggest that they take a look at what gets approved on Wednesday night and see if you would like to adopt that.
Okay.
Consider, consider adopting that?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good plan. Okay, what is the, and Telly, if you find it, you want to that, well, let us know. Um, this parking lots of forty or fewer spaces in the Class B districts may be surfaced with a layer of crushed rock of no more than one inch in diameter to a minimum of three inches in depth.
Currently, you have to, if it's over fifteen, I think you have to pave it.
And why wouldn't you want to pave it?
In a rural district where, you know, it's, where you're not, you don't have the stolen drainage infrastructure. You may be on a seal-coated road to begin with. Uh, those may not be paved.
Yeah, I'm sure he wants to pave everything he says. For runoff.
Forty parking spaces is a lot. Can you give me an example of forty parking spaces in, in the Chugac Eagle River area that we might all be familiar with?
Class B.
Well, the restaurants are up there at... I've got two restaurants up there on, on... I put, poppin', boil, whatever.
And you don't think those parking lots should be paved?
One of them, one of them is paved. I don't think that one is paved and hasn't been paved and whatever. I mean, it's been there. Italian places been there since...
Bella Vista?
Well, what's that? The ice cream store out of the quote in the lake?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bella Vista. That's got forty spots.
Yeah, but some of the other side, there's like a checkerboard of paving on there.
Yeah. But if you look at, like, the Oro District going up, a steel, like, highway, you can see development.
Yes, the world of this company. What about the Sherwood Shore of, uh... South Virtue, that one's on the left. That's not, that would require fifty parking spaces.
Correct, it has way over fifty parking spaces. I mean, yeah.
Would, would parking lots on forty or fewer spaces on an unpaved road need everybody's intent?
I don't think American Lees is paved. And that's...
Yeah, not the way they're developed out there. I mean, you've got highway and then you've got properties right butting up against it.
And why wouldn't you want to pave those areas if it, if, if it's on a paved road?
The cost to the property owner is the biggest reason. They're in a rural area where, you know, gravel roads, gravel, like, everything.
Well, Jim's point, I think, is very well taken. If it's on a gravel road already, then that seems to make sense that it wouldn't have to be paved. But if it's on a paved road, to go from a paved road to a gravel parking lot, I don't understand that.
Which building have you...
In. Class B.
And this is new. This is new. It may get wrapped in on, on a remodeling situation, but let's pretend for the minute that existing stays what they got. And so, this would be a new development, um, as opposed to an existing development. Well, like you said, it's going to impact anybody doing a minor modification. That, I understand that, Dan, and so, uh... The consortium felt that forty was a good breaking point. Forty is twelve thousand square feet. Or a hundred and sixty seat, uh, toilet. Baseball field or something like that is another example. We've got, we've got the French Park.
Lions.
We don't touch Lions Park.
Well, you're talking about grandfathering in, but in new development, I think it is unrealistic if you are on a paved road and you have forty parking spaces not to pave, not to pave the parking lot.
For, for, we could do a two hundred square foot addition onto an existing structure out there, but now all of a sudden, you have to pave the parking lot.
It depends on what the code says. Uh, if the code says paving, that's what we required in the whole, uh, code does say paving. You know, we, the public spent quite a bit of money paving a lot of those roads in the Chugac, uh, seal code. It's a wrap. It could reduce the PFT issue. When it does a button in urban street, it's the previous neighborhood, it's a commercial zone, it should have the urban improvements available for things.
Well, I would support that. I don't know that we have consensus, um, but we'll have further determinations and a vote on that one. Um, no restrictions, there's no restrictions on T one eleven, uh, when we talk about a mix of housing models on page forty-six. And here is where the mix of housing units models have, have been modified. Number of units required, five to fifteen, uh, two, sixty-three, and four.
These are the lower limits, is it?
Right.
These cannot, you know, they can have more if they want. But this is, we felt that that was, uh... The way that you could develop them reasonably.
Okay. So, and then on page, the next page, uh, commercial CE one I three, the store, a limited number of heavy, there's, uh, the facility, the opportunity to store a limited number of heavy equipment. This is not an area I know anything about. So, does anyone want to make any comment?
What do you think?
Uh, forty-seven, under commercial, Chugac Eagle River I three.
Yeah, we just continued existing code.
It continued existing code?
Yeah. I create this out there today, so we just continue it.
All right. Okay.
Uh, can we go back to page forty-six for just a moment?
Sure.
Um, item number four A, windows in the garage floor, the front floor is a seven percent requirement for glazing. Um, I believe we took that out.
We did.
And, uh, because it is really hard to get enough glazing on a house. So...
The new problem is taken out of there.
Okay.
Okay.
So, they do count, then?
They do count.
Yeah.
On the garage floor.
Okay, thanks, Stacy.
The way I read on forty-five, Dan, J one A, I could have a blank wall with no windows as long as I had seven percent on the total structure. Okay. Okay. And when you take a look around town, most of your construction done in the seventies or eighties, you're, you're between, uh, seven and twelve percent.
Okay. Well, here we come back to one of our favorite topics, which is conexes.
Page number?
Uh, fifty-five. So, if I read this correctly, are you telling me that within Class A residential districts, that you can have a conex?
If you can fit it on your lot and meet all of the requirements.
They have to pay a land use permit.
You know, using today's interpretation of what a conex is, it's not the same as what was read out a little bit earlier. If you ever watch TV, you see these American Steel, uh, fabricated buildings, which are in corrugated metal. They come with straight sides and pitch roofs. They look very much like a freestanding block or anything like that. Those are all classified now as, as conexes by land use enforcement.
Yeah, but what about the ones that aren't so attractive?
Well, we're not speaking to attractive or non-attractive, but we're saying that there should be the right to, I mean, if we want to change it, we can't put other ones up or...
Actually, what we did was we dealt with it in vegetative buffers and that sort of thing.
And cited, they have to cite it.
Yeah. One of the things was that Anchorage School District was really against citing things with, that matched the building because it's very difficult for them to deal with that. Because of what's whole generally about the things. Now, this is residential district, and I don't know if a school is built in a residential district, if that's still...
That's why it says similar materials.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I have a question in regards to this. Let's take Heritage Estates subdivision in Eagle River, of the Eagle River, um, road. Um, and what if the CCNRs, it's an R one, it's an R one, R one A zone, okay? It's fully developed subdivision. And when the CCNRs were done twenty-five years ago, they didn't mention conexes. So, when this goes into effect, does that mean that homeowners in Heritage Estates subdivision can put a conex in their backyard?
They can today.
If they get, if they get a permit?
They can today under existing code.
Well, they have to go through the homeowners association to get approval, don't they?
Yeah, and CCNRs privately upheld. And CCNRs are privately enforced.
Well, but what if, you know, in a homeowners association, let's just carry this further. Let's just say there isn't, there are lots of subdivisions that were done in the eighties that do not have homeowners associations.
As of today with existing code, they can have conexes.
As of today, not the new. Not the new, right.
Really?
No, so we're, we've taken away their ability to have a conex.
Jerry, do you have a comment?
I mean, we've got conexes down on the Park Strip. There's conexes, I, all over town.
It's a permitted use, um, for the first conex without needing to obtain a land use permit. This would mean that you would have to obtain a land use permit.
So, this is more restrictive than ours, the bowl?
They're popping up everywhere because, you know, the short conexes, planters, they just left it here. They stopped using this. But we have quite a few of those around. But they are allowed to have accessory structures in the, in the district's presence. We want to give them a lot of coverage and stuff like that.
Are you guys okay with the additional restriction of getting the permit?
They wanted to make sure that they, that they were screened and that they had materials similar to the main structure, that they were painted, that they blend in with it and they don't, they're not just going to come in with Conexes.
And the permit, I think, is a hundred bucks.
Oh, okay, the Anchorage School District comments? Do you have, do you have those?
I naturally have those, but I could try and find them.
Yep, okay, just send them. Oh, okay.
Well, it also allows the Conex boxes in self-storage facilities, which could create a really industrial look.
We approved one the other night in Anchorage. Conexes in a self-storage area.
Yeah, I told many stories, the whole thing is made of Conexes.
As long as they're the same inspection.
But it's how you put your site together and.
I don't have a response off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
We did, we did a exempt self-storage.
Right.
Under E.
Okay. I have a comment here. I just, clarification for page fifty-six, under garage or carport, private residential accessory use only. Item number one, number one speaks to detached. I just wanted to clarify that.
It says whether attached or be attached to the principal structure, more than fifty percent of the primary doors.
Well, what would be an accessory attached? Give me an example, can you give me an example?
Which would maybe on J or?
K, one.
A garage has an accessory structure attached to your primary structure?
Yeah.
A greenhouse?
Okay.
It could be a passageway.
Well, and, and the planning department, when they were running under the legal opinion and the theory that horse barns had to be attached to the primary structure, a lot of people attached with a breezeway.
Okay, but in this case, the horse barn can be no larger than fifty percent of the gross floor area of the principal structure.
If they have four or more animals, it'll fall under the large domestic animal facility, which is a different section.
I don't want to go there. Okay, this is just strictly garages and apartments. Okay. Can you speak to the home occupation accessory use only? And can you tell us how these standards may vary from?
For permissive, simple code.
Okay.
There are two allowed in a home. Husband can be running a, an accounting service and the wife could be running tailoring or another accounting service.
Do they get two signs and do they get double the amount of square footage that you would under?
No.
It's on page fifty-seven.
Twenty-five percent of five hundred square feet. Only one resident may be engaged in home occupation. A lot's great.
Whoa, 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 to any home occupation, if I would read CI on line of forty-two, that I could, if I've got two home occupations, I get two times five hundred square feet. To any home occupation, if I'm allowed two home occupations, I get two of them.
You get a thousand square feet?
That's how I read it, and that's different than what Dan said. That's all I'm pointing out.
I think the right looking judge is reasonable. That's what, that's what Hillside is now. There's over ten thousand home-based businesses in Anchorage Hillside. And forty percent of them are illegal in one way or another.
Probably more than forty percent.
Probably.
Can you really tell what's going on inside these if you have one outside person working there? You got a bookkeeper?
This is in Class A or any district, A or B?
A or B, and lots, the breakdown is lots less than forty thousand square foot, lots of forty thousand square foot.
Just on E on forty, on E on fifty-eight, little E on fifty-eight, your G-two should be H-two.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I have just one more, which is on page fifty-nine. Which has to do with parking commercial vehicles, outdoor accessory use only. Does this include motorhomes?
Motorhomes aren't typically a commercial vehicle.
Okay.
If you had a motorhome rental company, I could see a commercial vehicle, but that wouldn't be applicable here. So they would be private vehicles.
If you got a sticker on your car, Joe's Accounting Service, does that count as a commercial vehicle?
You know, there's a gal with a dog wash in a motorhome.
I, I would read, line forty-one, because forty-one would catch most motorhomes.
And a lot of trucks, there's tires that got on it.
Ninety inches. I mean, most motorhomes are taller than seven and a half feet.
Is it okay, though, to have a sticker on your car if you park in the driveway and come home?
It's not a commercial vehicle, just continue advertising.
Okay.
Unless you're code enforcement.
Having that on that, I don't know if I, I don't agree with that statement.
Code enforcement uses that.
Code enforcement, if I had an advertisement on my car, they'd cite.
Yeah, we have.
Like a political advertisement or something like that?
No, Joe's barbecue.
Yeah, those are cool, though.
Well, when we say commercial vehicle, we're talking about DOT regulating.
Yeah, but we got to sort of ten years in. You know, a commercial vehicle isn't unique to Eagle River. So, I would think a commercial vehicle in Eagle River would have to be the same as a commercial vehicle defined.
So would you consider a Bobcat, from point of discussion, would you consider a Bobcat or a bulldozer a commercial vehicle?
Yes.
What if they're just in my yard for personal use?
For landscaping?
Yeah, for landscaping, for myself, for myself. They're not hired out, rented out, done anything.
Talking about Eagle River.
Yeah, everybody's neighbors got their own little Kubota.
I have, I have two tractors, I have a Kubota and a Bobcat.
Everybody's got a Kubota out there. I got my John Deere.
Land use enforcement officers as, as not commercial vehicles.
I got John Deere tractor that I keep in the garage.
Right, but you're using it for commercial use.
I'm not.
Yeah, basically lawn, lawn hardware.
It's my lawnmower.
Forty-eight hours, I'm trying to understand that. Does it mean if you park some, if you park a commercial vehicle, diesel engine, you're running it, you park it in a residential lot, you park there for forty-eight hours, do you then just, does it have to be moved off the lot completely, or?
Well, the idea was that a guy owns a truck and he uses it every day. In winter, he hauls snow, in the summer, he's, he's, he parks it for weekends. We're not going to have code enforcement come out there and cite him because he's parking a commercial vehicle in his house.
How does this catch the famous fair contract associated?
The zoning changes in the fair contract.
Are we talking about?
The fair contract, are you talking about Golden Wheel?
Yeah, they're very happy with what we've done here.
If they read, are all, I would say a fair ride would be a commercial vehicle.
Yes and no. That property will actually become rural commercial, the new zoning district that we created. I spent time with the owner of Golden Wheel Amusement, and she's supportive of the chapter.
I'm just looking for unintended consequences, that's all I'm trying to read.
You say it'll become rural commercial, how do you come to that conclusion?
By design and how our chapter is written. BLI, or I, no, I.
It would have to be R-four to become rural commercial. I'm sorry, B-three, B-four.
B-four. Well, there's only one piece of B-four with the property left in the municipality, and that's a two and a half acre part of the neighborhood. No, we already talked, we talked previously, and we said, we talked about specifically Golden Wheel amusements, and we talked about the area around Boils Road there, Bella Vista, those areas. And they're all currently, or most of them are, B-three SL. And we said, if we didn't change the SLS, we converted them over to RC, would that create a problem? That's when we got into talking about how they convert it all, the zoning district seemed weird. And they said, no, it won't be a problem.
There'll be an ordinance that goes along with this, that implements RC onto the districts that, or the properties that qualify under the zoning district.
I guess the confusion I have is, I guess I get that all the chapters that have, that are the same across, R1, CE, R1, same, there would be an ordinance that would just change them over. I don't know how the special limitations would work in.
They stand and they carry over.
Unless they want to come back and do zoning change, otherwise the special limitations don't matter.
And then the other thing is, so, so rural commercial is your version of a B-four. And so, but were you talking about B-three becoming rural commercial?
Yes.
Oh, and, and someone said that's fine.
But only in certain areas, not all B-three would qualify for.
Just those areas that aren't served by water and sewer, those areas outside, outside that have to rely on well and septic.
The point is, there's a process that has to go along with that to make that occur again.
Right.
Yeah.
And just like we did in rural. And that's what I told them, we asked staff at that time, let's see, Albert was there, Erica, Donald was there, and that probably the order is.
We haven't seen that, I don't believe the department's seen that, so it's.
Well, no, because the zoning district has to be created first before we can bring forward an ordinance to make those districts.
Well, they have to go together, just like we did in rural. We haven't seen that, so we have no idea where you're applying the different zones. That's why I brought it up earlier this evening.
Yeah, and well, that's why in the, let's see, I had our seven meetings before, before it came to the planning commission. Let's see, there it is, we started in October the year before, and we got seven meetings up until July of two thousand eleven.
You know, it could be, some people might consider, so property might not be airborne with it, it might be a taking, it might not be a taking, it might be more restrictive, it might be less restrictive, I don't think it had to be.
It's less restrictive, it passed the legal test.
And that's why we asked them to take it past the legal department.
Well, I, I think in conclusion, I'd like to make a couple of comments and then ask other commissioners, too. I think there are some unintended consequences here as far as this chapter is concerned. And that, and I can speak only from my experience as a residential developer. There are some older, some very nice older subdivisions in the Eagle River-Chuyak area, primarily in Eagle River. They do not have active homeowners associations. They may never have even had a homeowners association created because they were developed twenty years ago or twenty-five years ago, okay? And there is no enforcement of the covenants, codes, and restrictions. And some of the things that are being proposed here and being allowed in the Class A residential districts, I think are going to be implemented in some of those districts and some of those subdivisions. And it's going to make for some pretty unhappy homeowners as a result of that. And I just want you all to, because there's no, because there are no covenants, codes, and restrictions, there's no enforcement of that, so when you change these regulations, that will become more permissive, so to speak, then they're going to, some homeowners are going to use those as an opportunity to create something that is probably, that at least probably was not intended originally for the subdivision. And I think that's going to be an issue. Right.
Are you speaking to Conexes?
I'm speaking to Conexes, to, to home offices or uses or, or whatever. Parking of commercial vehicles, you know, whatever.
Fabric structures.
Fabric structures and all that sort of thing.
Aren't pirated. I think that you will find that there's very few things in Chapter Ten that aren't currently available through us today in Title Twenty-One. I don't think we're granting anyone a whole series of new rights of abuse that are going to become public nuisances in their neighborhood. Chapter, Chapter Ten is very close to Title Twenty-One, as it stands today, but it's formatted like the Title Twenty-One. There are some exceptions, but those exceptions, if we go back to the community, those exceptions to that are sixty-seven percent or more in favor of the community. We didn't, I think it's fifty percent.
I, I understand that, but how did you get to that sixty-seven percent?
Dittman survey?
Dittman survey, and, and we went through all the community councils and we've done very exhaustive research.
Well, let's, let's, let's talk about, and maybe you can assuage my fears here a little bit by, when you talk for the Dittman survey, I'd like to, can, can we see that?
The land department didn't give you the whole stack of stuff we sent over?
If they did, I didn't look at it. So is the Dittman survey in there?
We've been getting eighteen inches of paper every week, so pardon us.
So is there a Dittman survey? I didn't see a Dittman survey.
The department didn't, I don't have a copy of the Dittman survey, maybe that's something.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see how many.
Do we just send it to you and then we can forward the rest to the commission?
Sure. I'm not the Secretary of Service, but I'll do that, yeah, okay.
Tony, I have a question.
So, so I'd like to see, I'd like to see the demographic. I'd like to see the number of people that were polled, I'd like to see it urban versus rural, you know, and all that sort of thing. Thank you.
Land use management.
Are we going to see one?
You already, you already have one that was proposed and approved in concept by the Assembly. Somewhere in the planning department, it exists. And I think that it's supposed to come back to you after adoption of Title Twenty-One for final approval, and then you guys are doing, I guess, massive.
So.
Well, that doesn't have, that doesn't have too, got too Eagle River.
Ryan, I thought you were gonna, I thought you were gonna say that this is the land use plan map.
That's the current approval.
Oh, but you're, I don't, I didn't think there was any proposed changes to the two thousand and six Chuyak-Eagle River comp plan and its land use plan map. You're not, yeah, this is it, right?
No, we're not changing, we're not changing anything from commercial to rural. From commercial to rural, to residential.
2006.
No, it's.
But the implementation of the RC district.
I got it, I know where it is. It's still commercial on commercial.
I'm sorry.
So the answer to my question is that the 2006 hasn't changed. But I heard you say that on B3 and B4, the part was and part wasn't, and that's where I started getting confused.
Well, it's staying commercial to commercial. It's not changing commercial to residential.
Yeah.
And so it still fits within the plan map that's in the comp plan?
This stays the same, this doesn't change.
Okay.
I think that Ryan's correct on that, because, so in 2006, they adopted a comp plan for Chuyak Eagle River, it has a land use plan map, and what it does is it identifies densities in commercial areas and public areas and industrial areas. And what's proposed in the, in Chuyak Eagle River Code that the consortium has brought, I think it fits into all of those. Where the staff and consortium may differ is the relaxing of some of the restrictions or with whether or not some of the proposed regulations by the consortium meet what the comp plans' goals, policies, objectives say. But I don't think, I think you're right, Ryan.
Except that Chapter 10 is set to roll a land use plan map into it, and we've laid out the boundaries for it, starting on page 47.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's.
So that it is amendable by ordinance, you don't have to open up the entire comp plan to change one small characteristic, that can be done by ordinance in Chapter 10.
We just took this and we spread it over three separate pages, so that you can actually read it as opposed to the rural one, where you look at it and you scratch your head.
Okay, so I'd like to hear from the commissioners, any final comments that you have regarding Chapter 10 before we move on. We are hoping to adjourn here at 8:30. Stacy, do you have any comments?
No, I think that the big need for us, that we talked about, would be bicycle board. Most, you know, the garbage trash, compact trash receptacles, screening, Conexes are a hot topic. Those are the main hot topics that I saw that we're going to have to resolve on the night.
Okay, all right. Here?
No, my question's answered a couple months ago.
Okay. Right.
Yeah, you'll probably never let me build in your subdivisions again after I say this, but.
[laughing].
We let you now?
I'm happy with what they did. Eagle River's got along a long time. They've got a nice community. Maybe some of the other neighborhoods might end up with a Conex, but they're going to do it with a permit, whereas right now they could do it without a permit. The newer stuff is going to have the covenances to address these things. And I just let them have some freedom. You know, they've worked hard on it. We're trying to figure out how we balance rights with making the community nice, and these guys have hit their head against the wall to do something that their community wants to do, and I think that's great, so that's all.
Okay, good.
My comments is, my comments are, pardon me, one, community councils don't represent everybody. And you're going to find out on the night of July 9, there's going to be a whole bunch of people who you haven't heard from, that there may be a bunch of people you haven't heard from who don't like what you're doing, don't like what you're saying.
But you know we've already had our public hearing, right? Testimony wise?
But you've got another one coming for you on July 9. You can just, I'm saying that there's going to be people in the crowd saying things that you don't want to hear. Two, very cautious on the data's comments on may versus shall, because that paragraph could turn around and bite you pretty bad. I think that's all I have to say.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you. And I've said everything I need to say. So we're going to move on here. We've already discussed item number three, which is additional issues. Well, we addressed Tyler's situation. This is an opportunity, even though there are only one, two, three, five of us tonight, any additional issues that any commissioners may want to address. Does anyone have anything?
One other thing I want to raise is that.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to point out that you guys still have to decide what you want to do on ADUs, and in the Eagle River one, they do not allow ADUs in R1, R1A, I don't know. I mean, it's still R3, those are, in those four residential zones, you guys still have to address that issue.
For accessory dwellings?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anything, any other issues?
Pertaining just to?
Our title, to anything. Our Title 21 rewrite process and efforts.
Well, I just wanted to see if you've got any recommendations about, and I should email her.
The 40% lots coverage for Rams.
It's in there. Proposed amendments, we'll be discussing Wednesday.
Okay, any questions?
How about the land use manual, Design Criteria Manual?
That is one of the major issues that we are going to try to present in a white paper for the Assembly consideration when we, when we deliver our provisionally adopted chapters with amendments. And we can take a few minutes to discuss this white paper, one of which is the Design Criteria Manual. And we have had discussions saying that it needs to be adopted by the Assembly with public input, that it needs to become ordinance. Anyone have any comments about that?
That sounds like a slam dunker. I talked to Ron Thompson about it, and he was okay with it being a regulation, and that's something that wasn't changed on a dime or a dime.
Okay, good.
Is it just process wise? I can draft something and circulate it, and then you guys can discuss it on the July 2 meeting, probably?
Yes, because it needs to be after we do our.
Because you have to do all of, yes.
Yes, okay. Okay. So the role of the P, the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's not really versus UDC, but that the Planning and Zoning Commission retains, it is, retains its existing duties and, that all commissions and boards retain their existing duties and responsibilities. Okay? And then Sally, do you want to speak to the role of community involvement?
Well, I don't know if we want a white paper on this or not, but it seemed like when we talked about the community council involvement and the changes you made to make sure that there's always a community meeting, not allowing the director to waive that requirement, that seemed to be something that there was strong feelings about. And so I didn't know if that would be something that would rise to the level that we would want to.
Right.
There was an issue of scheduling, though, if the community council wasn't going to meet.
Right.
Then you would have.
Yeah, we made those amendments. This is just, we want to provide additional documentation to show why. And I don't know how, if it rises to that level or not.
Well, I think it does rise to a certain level, because one of the, one of the primary, I would say, social motivators that we've had over the past few years is the multiple units on the single track without any sort of community involvement whatsoever. And I think that, that we have amendments that have addressed this issue, if it's more than 12 units or whatever the number was that was finally agreed upon, that there needs to be a community meeting, either as a community or as, at the, at the community council level, one or the other. I'm a big advocate for that. And then the other one is no new zoning districts, a lack of updated land use plan map, and inadequate economic impact study. So that's a big one. And I think we've addressed the issues of the new zoning districts. You know, Bruce has done a really good job with that. We've retained all of the zoning districts, all of the rights of the current zoning districts, and made mixed use a voluntary opportunity within certain districts. I would say that I have a couple of other things here, that there is an expansion of the role of the, of the director. We have addressed this in the past. I think the consensus was that there was no objection to the administrative role of the expanded responsibilities, but that, that there should be a time limit associated with those decisions, and that there was, there is always the right to go back to the board that would normally hear that, whether it be UDC, the planning board, or the Planning and Zoning Commission, that those decisions, instead of going to necessarily to the zoning Board of Appeals and Examiners, can go back to the, to the place where it would, it would have been heard in the past. Okay? The other thing that I would say is, in order to create faster turnaround and, that we're all feeling, whether it's planning, platting, or public works, building safety, whatever it is, that I would like to advocate that this commission put some time limits on things, on applications and decisions. And I think that's, that's very important.
I'm strongly in favor of that. I mean, that, number one, if we say you've got 21 days to respond, then an applicant, if he doesn't get a response, can go to court at that point in time, or go to the next point. If we don't have a time limit, and the applicant waits 21 days, he can't do anything. And he's hung out until some period of time expires, and he can say that's excessive, and then he has to argue it's excessive. But if we give them a time limit to respond, and they don't respond, I mean, we could give them a choice, you know, we could say, if you don't receive a response in 21 days, it should be considered approved as submitted. I don't know if we want to quite go that far.
Well, they'll just say no to everything, then.
Yeah, but at least, at least.
At least you have an answer.
At least you have an answer. But, but I am extremely in favor of a time limit that gives, then you got something to work with.
Right. And I think, I think that is, that is very, very important. And I would like to see that in Title 21.
I would, too.
I would like to see that in our white paper that when it's passed along. Okay. Are there any other comments? Yes?
Debbie's got her hand up.
Oh, Debbie, I'm sorry.
When do you think you will be finished? I heard that July.
Yes.
Day ending. The public hearing before the Assembly is September 11.
Yes.
I was planning on starting Assembly Committee hearings as soon as you were done, but it appears at this time that I'm going to have to start Assembly Committee hearings before you were done. So Jerry and I have talked, but I'm thinking July 19, I'm going to start on this road. The Assembly has not had access to this for almost two years, folks. The mayor had it forever, coffee had it forever. Now, you guys are doing good work. I'm listening, I'm learning, I'm not in any way dinging you, but the pressure is really, really on. We regularly get people contacting us about this. I have got to start, and I'm going to start without you.
Well, no, we're going to, we're going to have it. We, we are going to have it. We are very, very close, and Sally and I have had some discussions about this. We have to have an ordinance, not an ordinance, a resolution. We have to have a resolution. And we had discussions about whether we wanted to do it by chapter, or whether we wanted to do it all at once.
It's got to be by chapter, since you're doing it by chapter, it seems to me, but Jerry, chime in here.
I mean, product, and by chapter is probably preferable.
Well, we've approved, I mean, they approved it the June 4, 1, 2, and 12. Can those be forwarded without a resolution? What Dennis Withler told me is just do one resolution after all the chapters had been done with a history, and then basically attaching all of the prepared materials.
You could base some stuff earlier, presuming that that stuff's going to be approved, and make the final deliberations.
So can we give, could we give 1, 2, and 12 right now to the Assembly, or do we have to have a resolution on 1, 2, and 12?
Well, you could feed it, you know, you could feed it. It's not finished, though, the deliberations.
I, I, at this point, think that I'm going to just discuss informally what you've done on 1, 2, and 12, and I will wait for the resolution, but before we, September 11. But, you know, I, I won't state my frustration, because everybody shares it, I'm sure, but it just, you can't, you're not going to solve every problem, guys.
Right. We, we know that. We've left plenty for you to solve.
Yeah, I guess our thought was, assuming, you know, we, on Wednesday, we go however long is necessary, and we complete the rest of the chapters. Whatever amendments to those chapters are made, I need to incorporate into the charts, incorporate it into the documents, and then the next hearing is July 2.
July 2.
And the first thing would be to approve the resolution and all the materials, and.
And that we're done except for Chapter 10.
Yeah.
Just be aware that leaves my committee about a month and a half compared to the two years and some months other bodies have had. I just spend a little bit.
Debbie, we're going to, you're going to pass the, it's got to go, you know, to look at 1, 2, and 12, and you want to look at that, or whatever.
Yeah, we're happy to give that to you preliminarily without the resolution.
That will be good.
And I have incorporated the amendments to the amendment chart and the amendments to the red line, blue line draft that were approved at the June 4.
Okay. Just.
And then assume.
Did you get that product?
Yeah, as soon as, making the assumption that there will be no additional amendments to 1, 2, and 12, because our deliberations are not, are not finished.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Should I just, do you just want me to email those to you?
Or print, or.
Or what, how do?
Send them to Stafford?
Yeah, what's the process?
Since we're going to do it informally, and again, Jerry, I apologize, we haven't talked about this, but what I would like to have is a document that incorporates your recommendations, because I've already got the other two documents. I've got the provisionally adopted, and I've got the provisionally adopted with amendments that the status has suggested. So I'd like to see your version, so my committee can look at.
Okay, got it. All right. Anything else? Yes?
On Chapter 10, a couple of clarifications. We're doing a full public hearing with public testimony again, and everything from scratch?
We are taking public testimony on July 9. Is that correct, Sally? Yeah, on July 9.
Okay, do we need to redo our entire presentation from the first public hearing?
Up to you.
Yeah, that's up to you.
I will.
That's up to you. You'll have 10 minutes unless there are questions.
You'll have 9.3 minutes.
Yeah. You know, Jerry and I exchanged some emails about whether or not we needed to have the public hearing, and it was left that there would be another public hearing. And so we'll go ahead and do that. I think, you know, I think we've had a pretty good discussion on Chapter 10, really, quite frankly. I think we, we know a lot more than when we started this evening about what your intent is, what your goals are, and all that sort of thing. I would encourage you to make your presentation pretty brief, and, you know, we have a pretty good handle and feel, I think, for what your wants and needs are.
Okay. Are you guys going to deliberate and bring amendments on that night, too, or are we going to be a week out on those?
I would.
I think you heard the couple amendments, it was it, right? Going a couple nights, just in Chao Mai, it wasn't much.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, you pretty much got it, folks, tonight. That's it.
I'm not sure what-
You know, there was a couple guys missing, but-
The Assembly's something.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, what the agenda is on the 9th.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, well, we'll, we'll get it done. We'll get it done.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get it done.
Did you have public notice that you reported for the meeting on the night?
It's been noticed.
You know what she filed?
Okay. All right, so there, there you go.
I didn't get it noticed, but it's okay.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily have.
No, it was noticed, I, I heard from Julie.
Yes, my ear was still ringing.
All right.
Chamber got it.
Yeah, the Chamber got it.
Chamber got it.
It's in bear mode.
Who's going to be there?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, very good.
We're under control.
You know, really, this, it, when, I think from when we had our public hearing last year, we're doing this July 9 as a courtesy. Really, it's really a courtesy for anyone else who wants to have something to say about this chapter. Because it was a year ago, we do have new commissioners on the commission, and so we're doing this as a courtesy. Think of it in those terms.
Jerry, could you have somebody determine where, if the new commission's half the list in the last year's public testimony would be, or just this year's public testimony?
We have a new document in front of you, that's what's been presented to you, so all the-
Thank you.
You know, we will present, we will present the old information as history, but it's, we don't, we're going to have to-
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Okay. All right, is there anything else for the good of the order? Thank you all for your hard work and all your attendance. We're, we're almost there.
I meant that just, you know.
Yeah, I know.
Wednesday, you're going to do what this, or?
Well, we have an ML and P case.
First or?
First, first, and then, and then, we shouldn't take too long.
Can you give me an estimate, or am I going to go?
Yeah, me, too.
7 o'clock. 7 o'clock on Wednesday. 7 o'clock.
Wednesday's a-
Uh?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday's in the Assembly chambers. It's a regularly scheduled meeting. We're dealing with ML and P and all of the other provisionally adopted chapters of Title 21, except Chapter 10.
I've got it on my phone.
But it's just MLP, not, not the other, the other code?
There's no other casework.
Just MLP.
Yes. Be prepared to stay late.
Because it's a work session.
No, it's not a work session.
Wait a minute.
It is, it is a regularly scheduled meeting.
We need to get through, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 14.
14. All those chapters. We need to get through all those chapters. I will-